Good evening, we would like to bring in Alan Wallhoff, 17, 2016 meeting of the Urban Board, Boarding School Directors to order, and we have a roll call in place.
Ms. Boyle? Yes. Mr. Shimon?
Here.
Mr. McGarvey?
Here.
Mrs. DiBattista? She is absent this evening. Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Eckert?
Here.
Mr. Burns?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Burns coming up in the presentation.
Especially in Boston, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interboro School District, who granted this board in their deliberations this evening, a spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace. What we do might be for the benefit of others. All this will be asked in your name, amen. Pledge allegiance
To the United States of America and to the Republic, which is sacred, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and infinite, and eternal.
Do you have any experience with weapons tonight? Mr. McGarvey, are you aware of the public comments?
I believe we have three comments just coming from the wire, but two of my little partners would make an exception. The first is Mr. Zerdydoby.
Is this a reduction? And how much are you losing? And number 12, pointing to your, this is the wrestling match expenditure?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Last night at your workshop meeting, and you had a discussion on $800. That was for, to be expended for football from the A.C. shows, and it's supposed to be from the $8,000 that is allotted for them for their budget. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And so there was 30 minutes of discussion, and almost every board director participated in discussing that, you know, whether that money should be spent, whether it should be done in a public meeting, and a lot of people had a great deal of discussion. Now, just for, is there a record of that meeting? An audio recording of that meeting?
Yes, sir.
So we want to listen to that. It's on the website?
Not yet.
Not yet, but they'll both. So I think it's a very valuable demonstration of what you as a board in your discussions are talking about. Now, that was almost a little bit more than 24 hours ago. Now, Mike, I'm going to bring up the issue again with the airport agreement. Just in this 24 hours, you lost more than $2,000. You spent 30 minutes discussing $800. So just in this 24-hour period, you lost two and a half times as much of what you were discussing. So the problem with that is, when I asked about it, I brought it up again last night, not one of you were willing to bring it up as an issue. Now, the fact is that this airport agreement, which you lose, have lost so far $800,000. And you have a lot of these issues that are being raised with expenditures. Now, last month, Phyllis Floyd from Prospect Park went up and talked about the feasibility stuff, and she said, was talking about five-year plan that she wore in her course when she was a board director, had made, you know, that it was five-year plan. Has she submitted any documentation to support any of the claims that she made?
No, she hasn't.
So, I understand, but what I'm saying is that, because she then segwayed into Mr. Wolfhoff, and said that if Mr. Wolfhoff was allowed to do his job without any interference, we didn't get anything done, because our fund balance has been tapped into, to the point where the recommended 8% is that we should have as our budget. We are way below that, and the figure keeps changing. Now, our former solicitor, Jeffrey Sultan, from Fox World Chine, he was hired in the early 2000s, and he was very knowledgeable about school district affairs, and he was let go in the middle of his contract in 2011 December. Now, I remember him giving descriptions of the budget and the fund balance, that's what I, and he mentioned that there was a maximum limit. So I made a write-to-no request from you to find out what the fund balance requirement, whether there is a minimum or a maximum. Now, so I got a write-to-no request back from the superintendent, I mean, the school district, and it says that the fund balance for a budget greater than $19 million is 8%, which, and it says down below, it says, did you, is the estimated ending underside fund balance within the allowable limits? And you answered yes, and you have their total there that your fund balance is 3%. So what happened was that not one of you corrected that, because you certainly gave the impression that there is a minimum fund balance, but that's not true. So I think that, you know, to allow them to stand at a public meeting is something that you should not allow. My representative, Mr. Eckert, had the April meeting, when comments were made about Rafael Pupio for the bond fund, and talking about how it had been discussed at previous meetings, and Mr. Eckert corrected Mrs. Floyd about the issue, and why the fund balance for Rafael Pupio was not going to be the bond cancel. And, but then, Mr. Eckert withdrew like a frightened turtle, and asked an apology to Mrs. Floyd about speaking to her and addressing the issue about her comments about the fund balance, because this relates to the superintendent's contract, because the three people who voted against the contract happened to be from Lenovo, which means that the criticizing of the school board is an ongoing issue. It's been for years, and has resulted in the University School District having five superintendents in the last 10 years. And I don't think it's any secret that Rafael Pupio are the solicitors for Lenovo and as well as Eckert's. So, but just to comment on the bond cancel, Rafael Pupio is getting $8,000 as a solicitor fee from the bond issued itself. So they're not going away empty here. So I think that, and the airport agreement, you need to bring that up again. $800,000, all these issues that you've discussed over the past several months, you totaled that up, and it's not even $180,000, you meant, $100,000. You're losing $800,000 every single year if you do not address this issue. And so you're going to have problems, and I think that my representative, Mr. Eckert, I don't know whether you discussed anything with the contracts last night, but the exact session, but I would urge you go forward to try and recover this line. Thank you. Who next we have, Ms. Phyllis Floyd.
Phyllis Floyd, 6414, Prospect Park, and that was really a bizarre statement that was just made, as jumping all over the place and quoting people that wasn't quite accurate, but especially in regards to the two things. Number one, the airport agreement, it's been explained over and over again, that's what we offered them, we had to take, otherwise we would have deliberately funded, which would cost us more money, legal fees. It's not something that we as a board can do on our own. It's a contract signed by three entities, and all three, it's an agreement. And if Mr. Doby acknowledged that he asked the county, and he asked to the council, and they refused to, you know, come to us and make an offer to give us money, so what might make him think that they're going to say yes to us, when they've already initially made that agreement with the district, with the board? And, I mean, it's ludicrous, and he has promised to continually remind the board of how much money they're losing. Well, we're not losing money if it's money that we can't have. So with that said, it's a shame that the board has to deal with that type of comment, and I hope the public realizes that, you know, it's not as simple or as easy as the way he has explained it, okay? And then the other thing, when he mentioned my name about, asking about the bond cancel, the bond cancel was changed unknowingly to the board. It wasn't until that night of the work session, I believe it was, that the board found out that there was going to be a new bond cancel on, and then Rafael Pupio found out, but again, misinterpreted or twisted comments, you know, or personal opinion, getting along with my questions. 10.12, staff agreement with Delta T. 10.13, the staff agreement with general health care resources. 10.14, the staff agreement, service rates with U.S. medical staffing. Are these all one of the same services, first of all? And if they are, are we contracting the three different verse? And do any of you know what their, did you read over the contract and know what their annual pay is, because it's not listed here, what their hourly rate of pay is, nor is it listed up to a max to the law? None of that's listed here, it's just now approved.
Your office, your solicitor, trustee?
Good evening, Mrs. Floyd. Our office reviewed the contract of all three entities that you've mentioned, and the reason that the district contracted with three different entities that might provide the same services is that there is sort of a universal shortage of services that these entities provide. So it's set in line on one agency or entity for special education services, like personal care systems, or nursing services. The board is wanting to have other options in the event we're not able to get the individuals that it needs into schools when it needs them. As you know, when a student requires a nurse, the student needs the nurse, and it's not something that can wait a few weeks until another agent is, is entered into a contract. Yeah, and most of these services are for students with special needs, who's in car emergencies, and have to be dealt with immediately.
I doubt that, but I know we were paying, I believe it was $50 an hour at one point, maybe not last year, but one, when I was on the board, to Delta T to have a nurse ride on the school bus with a student, yes, the student needed the nurse. However, we could have used one of our nurses, who could pay much, much, much less than what they do. But that's my opinion, but I thought I'd mention it. Delta T, I very quickly was looking through the attached agreement, and I believe I saw a commitment, like, I think there's a minimum of $7,000, like, in other words, if you don't use them, we're still obligated to pay the $7,000? Did anybody read the back contract? Okay, there was something in there then. The other thing is, I asked last night, because there was positions that were posted, and I see there's resignations listed under 8.17, and the district attendance officer slash assistant football coach is resigning, even though there is an apparent administrative leave that was granted, and is also, I know it's personnel, but it's public knowledge that he's resigning, and I wanted to know if the investigation is ongoing or not.
Going on seven minutes, five minutes, waiting one question, and ask.
I didn't get an answer to this question.
What's a personnel negotiation?
I just want to make sure that we're not.
Personnel, I can't answer this.
Okay.
Next question, who is it, it's the last one.
I also want to thank my representative, Justin Cheban, for getting an answer to me to a question that was asked, and I was promised the information to be sent to me by the finance chair, Mr. Evans, and at one point, Mr. Evans blatantly said that he could not give me the information, even though it was available. And Mr. Cheban, thank you for getting the information to me, it was very quick and simply done. And how irresponsible was that of the finance director, that either he didn't have the information, or was unable to get the information? That is really sad and irresponsible.
And Mr. Burns?
Mrs. Floyd.
Keep on.
Mrs. Floyd.
You didn't tell Mr. Zerdydoby, and he went past.
Mr. Doby.
Do you let Mr. Zerdydoby talk a lot?
Mr. Doby talked for six minutes.
No, he talked for more than six minutes. I can't do it.
Just one more public comment from Ms. Kate Caruso.
My name is Kate Caruso, 6469, Prospect Park.
Pick up on, I can't hear you.
Kate Caruso, 6469.
Thank you.
Prospect Park. On July 27, actually it was the 20th, I hand the letter to Mr. Ross, in regard to the parking lot on the 9th Avenue 7th. It's a disgrace. The plants are dying, trees are dying, the weeds were growing after a long condition. I did see the response, the, 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 people came out and pulled the weeds, that was it, nothing else. It was promised that the zoning would be, when this whole project was undertaken, that this would be maintained. It has not been. There hasn't been one drop of water on any of those plantings since they were put in. That's, that's just not good. I mean, you're looking at living things that need time and attention, and it's just not happening. You made a commitment to the neighborhood that these plantings would create a buffer, and now they're dying. Where's the buffer? It was, I wrote the letter from an emotional state, I'm sitting here for reading and recycling it, and I realize now that that's exactly what it was. And what oil stands is the fact that the board has walked away from the commitment that was made to the zoning board. You promised that in March parking lot, which is our neighborhood, would be buffered by these plants. Your key stone commitment was to maintain this buffer. You were beyond code and needed zoning board approval, and based on your presentation, you committed to this buffer, which is now compromised. 13 plants are dead, others are dying from the plant. Are you walking away from the commitment you made to the zoning board?
Yes, would you like to move on?
Thank you. Would like, I'd be happy to speak with you after. I am a gardener myself, and I know it's very hot right now, and this is not the optimal time to be removing plants and replanning, but I'd love to talk to you and we can get a plant in place. Okay? Thank you very much.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I may, but I have a comment. Do you mind if I come up there and break the board?
Let's get you to sign in first.
Oh, sure.
After you make an exception, but just for everyone's knowledge, when you come in, you have the sign machine, and then we can recognize you.
Of course, I'm a resident here.
Welcome.
I've been here for thirty some years. All right, I'm a resident here.
I come here tonight to represent several children that I'm aware of that have come to this school, who were presently involved with trying out for sports at Interboro, and they're presently in the gymnasium the last three or four days, trying out for sports, and they begged me to come up here, and if you can do something to help the air that is in the gymnasium. There is no air conditioning right now in there. I don't think there's ever been any air conditioning here, but the air is stagnant. They're in here working out, performing to join a volleyball team, and it's been very difficult for them. They come out complaining about being dehydrated. They also come out complaining about their clothes stinging from sweat. So I don't know why we can't put a couple fans in here, maybe open up a couple doors, big fans, power fans, turbo fans, whatever can help these children so they don't be hydrated, and God forbid, as they. I want to bring that to your attention, and hopefully this will be taken care of. This is the second year that I know of several children who have complained to me personally about the conditions in the gym, when they have to come in here and try out for sports teams because the lack of proper air. So I hope I can bring that to your attention, and maybe you can bring a couple big fans in here to help these kids to overcome what they're going through.
When will we address that?
When can that happen?
We will speak to our facility manager.
Excuse me, I can't hear you.
We'll talk to the facilities manager after the meeting, and we'll run something by tomorrow.
Hey, thanks a lot.
Got you no problem.
Thank you.
Is that Ed, Mr. Burns?
It's on the comments.
So is it Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Bows. This month, our office has been consulting with administration on contract review, personnel issues, tax assessments, appeals, policy review, and has also provided professional development on current new issues.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd. Number four here, Barnes?
Number four, financial motion, 4.1 motion that the tax treasurers report the bond pending July 31, 2016 be approved.
Second. It's been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing normal, there's a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, eight zero. And Mr. Barnes, does he have a question?
There's also motion 4.2.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Motion 4.2, still under financial, that the fund disbursements in the amount of $4,710,072.67 be approved.
Second. Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing normal, there's a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, eight zero. Have correspondence?
Number five, there is no correspondence.
Okay, thank you. Number six?
Number six, typically we move minutes from the previous meeting. The July 4 minutes will be approved at the September 4 meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Committee reports, number seven, Mr. Evans, finance?
Yes, the finance meeting was held on August 6, 2016, commenced at 6:02 PM in the library at Prospect Park School. Mr. Highschool presented the committee with preliminary financial statement current as of July 31st. He also provided an update on the status of capital projects. Mr. Highschool provided an update on the status of the state budget, along with discussion points, and the board again discussed the idea of using leftover capital funds to pay debt service for 2016-17, but has decided to continue discussion and perhaps take action prior for the February 2017 payment. The August bond payment will be made from the general fund on August 10, 2016. Mr. Highschool also provided a summary of the proposed capital projects for 2016-17, with Mr. Wolfhoff noting that the HVAC project is on schedule with no change orders for date. The finance committee meeting was adjourned at 6:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. 7.2, GBO, Mr. Eckert?
GBO, he started immediately following the finance committee. There were three items on the agenda. The first, the first item was the wrestling match. After discussion with that, that is now an agenda item. We are going with the recommended match from the athletic department and Mr. Ross. Last month, there was a motion for to adjust the fee schedule throughout the district for using the facilities. It was tabled during the meeting. That was also discussed, and it's also a motion this evening. There is one change on that fee schedule, where youth clubs will not be paying anything for the use of the facilities during Monday through Saturday. There was an update on the life skills department, on progress of how that is going, and it's a new addition, a renovation of one of the classrooms to promote that program this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. 7.3, legislative update, Mr. Barnes?
The legislative committee did not need this pass upon to the sovereign, and there is no activity right, pending right now due to the sovereign in Harrisburg, so we'll have another legislative update sometime.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. 7.4, Dover County Community College, Mr. Shadon?
The Dover County Community College did not need, at this month, so I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Shadon. 7.5, Mr. Harris, Dover County, how are you?
Thank you for all the extra time he's gotten, I know it was awful, real wonderful. Actually, I'm kidding. Thanks for coming out to the cafeteria, Mrs. Brown, you sent your latest snacks afterwards. Sorry.
The Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors met on August 3, 2016. The intermediate unit general operating budget for 1617 has been approved by all 15 school districts. Approved the DCI to summit grant applications for expansion dollars to expand the present early head start. Approved the DCI to provide six days of Google apps for an educational workshop. Approved to implement a work, office workforce development year-round youth grant. Approved DCI participation in board Approved DCI participation in a board-based access program. For more news and happenings, go to DCIU dot com. That's all. Thank you.
Moving on to number eight.
Number eight, personnel. Motion that the following personnel actions be approved, eight point one through eight point one seven.
Second. Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried, eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Barnes.
Number nine, Office of Regulatory Instruction. Motion that the following letters be approved, nine point one through nine point four.
Second. Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Barnes.
Number ten, Office of Special Education and Human Services. Motion that the following letters be approved, ten point one through ten point one seven.
Second. Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Barnes.
Number eleven, Office of Technology. Motion that the following letters be approved, eleven point one.
Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Barnes.
Number twelve, Office of Facilities. Motion that the following letter be approved, twelve point one. That the board of school directors approve the attached two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen annual service agreement with ProZee's managed water solutions, water treatment, closed loop heating systems, cooling towers, Interboro School District, and an annual cost eight thousand, six hundred dollars. Built quarterly at two thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars, paid from district funds.
Second. Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
Number twelve point two, that the board of school directors approve the attached ProZee with Northern Flooring Company, the new wrestling mats and wall pads at Interboro High School, the amount of twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty cents paid for capital project costs.
Second. Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five, three, answers. And next motion, Mr. Barnes.
And twelve point three, that the board of school directors approve the attached two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, be scheduled for the facilities usage of the studio fee of Interboro School District.
Second. Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Barnes.
Number thirteen, Office of Finance. Motion that the following letters be approved, thirteen point one through thirteen point seven.
Aye, the second. Motion has been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, eight zero. And we are going to, is there any old business? Hearing none, are there any new business? Hearing none, our superintendent, Mr. Barnes.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. There are a number of families as of today that have still not come into the registration office to satisfy summer registration requirements. This pertains to all students entering first, sixth, and ninth grade, and those families who live in a multiple occupancy situation. This process must be completed by August twenty ninth order for students to begin school on September sixth. The registration office is open Monday through Thursday, nine to one, as well as Mondays and Wednesdays evenings from four to seven. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact the registration office at six one oh, four six one, sixty seven hundred, extension one one two nine, one two seven nine, excuse me, and speak with Mrs. O'Shea. Back-to-school packets, which will include your child's teacher and or home assignment, will be mailed out the week of August twenty second. If you do not receive your packet by the end of the week, please contact your school. Also, over the past summer months, the district has been constructing an apartment as part of our high school life skills program. Through the collaboration of the board and the administration, we have acquired donations of appliances for the apartment, saving the district approximately twelve hundred and fifty dollars. And I would like to thank those who have made those donations and we look forward to giving everybody an opportunity to see the apartment at any time and especially at the high school open house back-to-school night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Are there any comments from the board? Mr. Shadon?
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. I just wanted to wish everyone luck at the start of the beginning of the school year, teachers, staff, students, and families, so good luck.
Any other board members?
Comment?
Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Just wanted to pass a comment about the Army Fitness Challenge. It was organized by Mr. Ed Floss along with the Army Recruiting Station and State Representative Nick McCurelli. Three Saturdays ago, at the high school stadium, there was approximately eighteen teams of seven people each that participated. It was the first year for this event and I think it was well-supported and well-attended and I want to thank him and look forward to more of the same type of events. Also, wanted to mention the marching band again, represented in the school district well at the Ocean City Baby Parade this past, uh, week, this past Thursday. And I'd like to thank Mr. Wolf and his staff for their quick response to the cheer league in the high school and their prep for all the fall sports that are already underway, soccer, band camp, volleyball, and football, and all those things that are already underway well in advance of the school year. So thank you, sir. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any other board members? Hearing none, on Tuesday, September sixth, two thousand and sixteen, finance committee meeting with the GBO meeting in W. Powell, GBO at six P.M. in the boardroom, the administration building. The next work session of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be convened in the boardroom of the administration building on Tuesday, September twentieth, two thousand and sixteen, at six thirty P.M. The next regular monthly public meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be convened in the auditorium of the high school on Wednesday, September twenty first, two thousand and sixteen, at seven P.M. Meeting is adjourned and welcome to coming in.